The Dayton Public School District is a thriving school system, serving students from preschool through high school. With more than 12,000 students across 27 schools, parents can feel confident that their students will receive a high-quality education and graduate prepared for lifelong success. Here are 11 reasons you will love Dayton Public Schools. All DPS preschools are five-star rated by the Ohio Department of Education and are free for students. All first through third grade classrooms implement the district's successful double-teaching model to increase academic achievement and close gaps. All fourth through sixth grade classrooms provide high dosage tutoring for students, which reduces class size and provides students with more individualized instruction. Students of all ages have career exploration opportunities to help them learn about different career paths and develop an understanding of what is required to make their dreams a reality. DPS has one-to-one technology, which means all students have access to a Chromebook. DPS is home to one of the world's 41 challenger learning centers, where students get hands-on experience with science, math, engineering, design, and learn about space travel and exploration. The district offers music and art opportunities at all grade levels. Middle and high school students can even take part in an all-city band to perform with students from across the district. Middle school students can participate in Project Lead the Way classes to explore STEM concepts and learn valuable life skills. These courses are designed to teach students to be problem solvers, critical thinkers, and team players. The district cares about both students and their families. Family resource coordinators are in many schools to help connect families to any resources they may need, and student resiliency coordinators and student behavior therapists are available to any student who may need counseling or support. The district offers two career technology centers to prepare students for college and careers. At Ponets CTC and Metaldale CTC, students can choose from dozens of pathways and begin working toward industry credentials in their chosen field. All high school students can participate in college credit plus courses, which allows them to earn college credits for free during high school. These credits transfer to public colleges and universities after graduation. Students can even earn an associate degree while in high school. Learn more and enroll today at DaytonPublic.com.
That's my favorite part. You ready?
You be sitting there looking around like, "Oh, man." You gotta do it when they're not paying attention and do it hard so they look.
All right. I now call to order this June 13th Board of Education Review Session. May we have a roll call?
President Goodwin?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sampson?
Present.
Ms. Wiganey?
Present.
Dr. Pickett?
Present.
Ms. Reynaud?
She has an excused absence.
Mr. Lacy?
He also has an excused absence.
Five present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a flag? One second while we locate a flag. Got a picture? All right, Dr. Lally has one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I believe we have a couple of special recognitions.
Our first recognitions tonight are the Spring Sports City Champions, and I'd ask for the board and treasurer and Dr. Lawrence to join us down in front on the floor, and then students will receive you as your names are called. So I'd like to invite Chief of Athletics, Victoria Jones, and her team forward to announce the students.
As you guys are coming, we'd like to just thank you on behalf of athletics for again welcoming us and meeting our champions for spring season. Coaches, as you can prepare, as you come up, Dr. Lally, President Goodwin, Vice President Smith, and our board members, we do appreciate all the work you do for us. In the absence of A.D. Nguyen, I will be standing in for him for the middle schools. We have Coach Warren, who will present his track team, who are city champions.
Good afternoon, Coach Warren, E.J. Brown. Again, want to congratulate the boys here on winning the city championship, the hard work that they put in this year. Also shed a little light on the girls' track team, where we had five athletes represent the district at the state meet with two, uh, three events placing at the state meet, so represented the district well. Wanted to shed a little bit of light on that. Up first, we have Isaiah Wilson. Then we have Sakai Howard Jackson. And that's all we have present today, so I want to say thank you and again, congratulations again on another city championship.
All right, perfect. There we go. All right, three, two, one.
Next, we just want to acknowledge Stivers Girls Track City Champions. They're not present today, but we still wanted to honor them on their accomplishment. Okay, we have a few, we just don't have coaches, so if they can come up. All right, correction, that's the high school, so I guess they wanted us to know that Tigers are in the house, just not the middle school. All right, next up, we will have A.D. Mullins, and she will present our next champions.
So next up, we have Coach Shomper and Belmont Softball.
Thank you. Just wanted to recognize our girls. They did a fantastic job representing Belmont and Dayton Public. Very proud of the girls finishing as co-champions with Stivers in the city league. Overall, they finished seven and 11, lost in the tournament to eventual state runner-up Greenville, and just did a fantastic job this year, so congratulations to the Lady Bison from Belmont. We'll introduce the girls, starting off with Senior Megan Dietz. Freshman Megan Leonard. Senior Kalen Canalis. Freshman Courtney Jernigan. Senior Marcella Henry. Senior Xandra Johnson. Senior and League Most Valuable Player, Jordan Ritchie. Senior Madison Hardings. And Junior Aveda Tanny. And I could not have done it without my great assistant coach, Ms. Hannah Zikraff.
I also want to acknowledge that Coach Shomper was the Southwest District Division Two Coach of the Year, so congratulations to Coach Shomper. Next, we have Coach Booker and Dunbar Boys Track.
Hello, board members. Just like to congratulate the track team on winning their 29th consecutive city league championship, and all the hard work and dedication and commitment that they gave to our team and the legacy. So our coach, Hurt, is going to introduce the kids.
Hi, good evening, everybody, board members, President Goodwin, Vice President, everybody. All right, let's get this over with. We have Darian Price. We have Keishon Golden. I have to put a little juice on this kid's name right here. We have Devonte Young, who is not only a city champ, but a state champ. Javion Graves. Tybrian Taylor. Jawan Craver. Derek Hardy. James Bailey. And our good faithful manager, Rebecca.
Next up, we'll have A.D. Goddard.
Good evening. Next up, we have the city champs for baseball, Metaldale Lions, with Coach Kenny Jones and Assistant Jeff Hoskins.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank all the players that came out this year, having a nice season this year, worked their best to their ability, could have been better. I'd just like to say, this year was extremely great for us for their first year winning as the city champs, even though we got beat in the tournament, but that's okay, we can move on past that. It's better days coming on for restoring the war for the Lions. First up, we have Aiden Copus. Richard Lacy. Kingston Taylor. Rashawn Davidson. Carlos Wood Jr. Thurston Melson III. And Chris Morgan. We also have three, uh, two coaches that I really like to appreciate for coming. This guy was on the first base every trip he could, talked to the young man that he could, and he's a young man himself, and he called himself the best pitcher in the nation. So Kenny Jones III. Mr. Jeff Hoskins Sr. And of course, myself, Kenny Jones Jr. Thank y'all.
All right, everyone look over here. Three, two, one.
All right, next up, we have city league champs for girls' track, presented James Scott and Coach Eads.
How everybody doing today? I would like to thank, appreciate everybody for letting me, especially the parents and the kids, for letting me in their child's lives and helping coach them and mentor them. And like you said, you know, we were the city champs this year. Tough road, but we got it done, and we also had a couple of girls go to the regionals this year, did pretty good, so I'm expecting higher things next year. And with that being said, my first young lady that's here today is Star Bobo. Next young lady is Myla Colson. Next young lady, Shelby Carter. Next young lady would be Erica Harvey. Next young lady would be Deja Johnson. Ayana Jones. Elise Parker. Anaya Rogers. And Madison Tyler.
Board member Wiganey. There you go, the little window there, perfect. Yeah, he's good. All right, three, two, one. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, last up, we have Stivers Softball, co-city champs. Coach Baker could not be in attendance, but three of his athletes came, so we'd like to recognize them. First, we have Lauren Pete. Next, we have Madison Tyler. And Rain Pogue.
This concludes our presentation, thank you. All right. Dr. Lally, our next presentation.
Our next presentation is a career pathways presentation of work that we've been working with Thurgood Marshall, Dunbar High School, Wagaman, and Edwin Joel Brown, and this is the, um, the product of what will be implemented this coming school year in these four buildings. So I'd like to turn it over to the Chief of Secondary Schools, Erin Dooley.
Good evening. President Goodwin, Dr. Lally, Treasurer Abrahah, and board members. Tonight, we'll be sharing with you information about new career pathways that are being implemented at Edwin Joel Brown Middle School and Wagaman Middle School, and at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School and Thurgood Marshall STEAM High School. Next slide, please. These new career pathways will help attract and retain teachers and students, create content connections between middle and high schools, and allow equitable access to career pathways in multiple buildings, and will maximize efficient and effective use of shared resources. Next slide. So back in the winter, Superintendent Lally assembled a team from Dayton Public Schools and also the Montgomery County ESC to look at our youth science data. The youth science career inventory identifies student aptitudes and interests, and after consultation with those from the ESC and our DPS team, it resulted in our choosing four pathways: engineering, which would be Project Lead the Way, health science, agriculture, and business entrepreneurship. And the idea is, is that all middle school students will survey all four of those pathways in seventh grade and then again in eighth grade. Next slide. Next slide. So this gives you a little bit of an overview about some of the things that the kids will be doing during their pathway class. So if we look at the engineering pathway, again, this is for Edwin Joel Brown and Wagaman. In the seventh grade, they'll take their Project Lead the Way Design and Modeling Class for one period every day, and that period changes every quarter. The eighth graders will take the Project Lead the Way Robotics Class for a two-period block of time, and that will also rotate every quarter. So every student has access to every pathway twice while in middle school. If you go to the next slide, one of the other things that we are introducing at Dunbar High School and at Thurgood Marshall is DPS University. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gail.
Thank you, Chief Dooley. DPS University is an accelerated academic program to support students in achieving high levels of success in their academics. We are piloting it, as mentioned, at Thurgood and Dunbar this coming year. The focus, a primary focus of it, will be College Credit Plus with ninth, primarily the new ninth graders and a few 10th graders also from Dunbar and Thurgood. We looked at grade point averages and test scores in the spring and select, and then I also talked with principals from the middle schools and counselors to get recommendations of students to invite to be a part of these initial cohorts at the two high schools. So then, most of those students, almost all of those students, were coming from EJ Brown and Wagaman. So we took time at their eighth-grade recognition ceremonies to go and be there. I was there, and at least one principal from each of Dunbar and Thurgood were at each of those. And we presented the initial students that we're inviting with certificates. We had a little information meeting after the ceremonies where we could share information with the students and their parents about this program. And the 10th graders who will be a part of it have received information and invitations through school and through parent communication. We began registering these students for Sinclair right away, those whose parents were interested and they were interested, that last week of school after their, after we had the recognition ceremonies. Then I went and spent time at each of those two middle schools, EJ Brown and Wagaman, that last week of school, and started helping students register online for Sinclair. And then last week, I started giving Accuplacer tests, the placement test, the initial placement test at Sinclair, to students who had already registered and had their registrations gone through so far. So we, I was able to actually test five students last week, and will continue testing on through the summer. So we'll be continuing to work on registration and placement test this summer. I'm working, I have a list of the students we've invited, and I'm reaching out to families and calling them and setting up appointments and trying to get together over the summer. These students who are going to be a part of this initial cohort, which we're very excited about, their parents are very excited, the students are excited. When they actually register, and then when they take that placement test and pass it, which is happening, they are, you know, of course, I'm thrilled and I, and they are too. So it's been a great start here in these last couple of weeks as we've been doing this. These students will then be taking the first writing composition course, English 1101, in the fall. We have teachers at both, well, at Dunbar, we have a teacher who's already certified to teach that through Sinclair, so they'll be in a class with that teacher. At Thurgood, we have a new teacher that we anticipate will be certified, and will be teaching that class at Thurgood. So at 11, they'll take 1101 in the fall, and then 1201, the second semester of that course in the spring, and get their first two college classes in in their freshman year. And then the plan is to keep, continue, to increase the number of CCP courses they're taking throughout their high school time, with the possibility, if they really excel, in finishing associate's degrees at the same time they're finishing their diploma. Ms. Lewis has been, has done this kind of work more than I have in the past, and helped us think about lining out some possible sample courses for what that schedules, for what that would look like, and I'm going to let her say a little bit more about that.
So what we've done is laid out pathways for each year through their senior year. So freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. And the way we have it, had it set up, is their freshman and sophomore year, they're going to be taking the same classes together. These are general classes that we've gone through. Some of the associate degrees at Sinclair, and we found some liberal arts degrees in the Associate of Science degree, the university parallel degree, that the same required classes they can take at the beginning. So besides the Englishes, their first year, they're just going to take general ed classes that also are part of the Ohio Transfer Module, and so they're going to transfer to any school in Ohio. And there are also classes that are going to be needed in the, in a four-year degree if they go. So just general classes like psychology, sociology, American history, communications, and different classes like that. And so, can we go to the next slide? And so their junior and their senior year is when it becomes more personalized. So at the end of their sophomore year, we're expecting them to choose a major. And so we'll be able to work with them, and also Sinclair advisors will be able to work with them to make sure that what they decide to major in, that they can finish with in a associate degree in, as long as they complete the classes in the pathway. So what you guys see up here is an example, if somebody wants to go into nursing. So this is beneficial for students because Sinclair's nursing program has a long waitlist. But what we do is, so this pathway is taken straight from Wright State's Articulation Agreement with Sinclair. So if we go on Sinclair's website, they have a lot of articulation agreements with different colleges that outline pathways, and so these classes are taken straight from Wright State University's Articulation Agreement for their nursing program. And so what will happen is, if a student finishes with an Associate of Science degree, they have 20 credit hours that they can take in anything. So if they're interested in a STEM major, what we do with those 20 credit hours is we give them classes that are going to align to the field they want to go into when they transfer for a four-year degree. So they'll still have their Associate of Science degree, but they'll also be able to transfer and have a lot of those classes knocked out. So this just happens to be a pathway for someone who may be interested in nursing. In most of the nursing programs you look at, students are going to have to take Psychology, Lifespan Development. They're also going to have to get an STNA certification before they can start their clinical classes. So this pathway would be giving students chances to take things like that. Human Anatomy is going to be required in any four-year nursing program. So they will be taking Human Anatomy. They will be getting their STNA, well, their CNA certification and a chance to sit for their STNA license. They would also be getting their Patient Care Technician, their PCT certification, which means that they could also possibly work in a hospital and intern and gain those hours before they graduate as well. So that's an example of a pathway, but it's going to be personalized. And also their junior and senior year, they'll have a chance to go on Sinclair's campus. So they can choose to take classes online, they can choose to actually go on campus and take classes. But it's just a great opportunity for our students, and they will have a lot of options of degree choices that they can go into.
Okay, good evening. At this point, I would like to share with you some key points about what the pathways will look like at Thurgood. First, we have our Biotechnology Pathway. In this course, students will learn that biotechnology is what it is, the jobs and careers that will be available to them in that pathway, and learn basic laboratory techniques associated with the field of biotech. Also, the Health Sciences Pathway, we want our students obtaining certifications in nutrition and exercise training. Arts and Communications Pathway, students will engage and learn from industry professionals, the art of writing, and producing podcasts. They'll also take journalism courses and courses like that. Engineering and IT, in this pathway, students will learn about coding, electronics, drones, and building robots. We really want to open up the world of opportunity to our students. You know better than I do that our students leave here having not experienced what they need to, to seize certain opportunities. And so, as you can see laid out here, we believe this is a really good start to propelling our students forward.
The next slide is just giving you the actual courses that we have course codes for and began to put into our master schedules. For biotech, we have Intro to Careers in Biotech, as well as second semester, they will have Intro to Zoology. Arts and Communication will have the Music Tech Lab, Journalism, Creative Writing, and Photography Class. Health Sciences, there's Weightlifting 1 and 2, Exercise and Athletic Training, Sports Nutrition and Wellness, Athletic Injury and Prevention. And then the Engineering and IT, there's the Drones, Robotics, as well as the CCP IT courses.
So in the fall at Dunbar, the three programs that we will be starting are the Content Creator Pathway, the Agriculture Pathway, and Sports, Fitness, and Wellness. And some of the key points for each of these programs with the Content Creator, we've built in a CCP option. So starting their junior year, for each class they take, they can decide if they want to take it as a high school class or if they want to take it as a CCP class. And the way that it's built in, if they decide that CCP option, then once they finish all of those classes, they'll obtain a, an industry certification in New Media from Sinclair. With the Agriculture Pathway, we have a great teacher, Mr. Houston, who is excited. He's always, he's already coming up with things for this. And so they have a few opportunities in that pathway as well. One of them is to join 4H and participate in those activities. Another one is FFA, participation in different competitions and things like that. And then for the Sports, Fitness, and Wellness Program, they have two opportunities. So one is to take the Team Sports and Officiating Class, and with that class, they have the opportunity to come out with certified to officiate or referee. And so they would, that's a chance for immediate income because they can referee games or, you know, events, team events for middle school and elementary, just as long as they're younger than them. And then another opportunity with that pathway is to come out certified to be a personal trainer. So those are a couple of opportunities that they have, that they'll be able to make immediate income with that. Next slide. And so this just talks about for 2023, because with the pathway, we're going to be building onto it and adding new classes each year. And so just some of the new classes that we'll be adding for next year, Agricultural, Intro to Agriculture, Content Creator, Podcasting 1 and 2. And with that Podcasting 1 and 2, for each semester, it's going to be two blocks. So they're going to go from podcasting with our language arts teacher, where they're learning the journalism side of things, and then they're going straight to a podcasting lab, where they're going to actually get to practice creating those podcasts, and then spoken word. And then for the Sports, Fitness, and Wellness, Sports Nutrition and Wellness, Lifetime Sports, Officiating, and Team Sports, those are some of the new courses we'll be offering, some of them we already had. Next slide, please. And this is just an example of what that will look like as a pathway as they go through. So freshman year, they're not starting pathways, they're actually doing a career exploration class, which is kind of being revamped, so that during that class, all the ninth graders will learn about all of the programs that are offered at Thurgood and at Dunbar. And then they start their pathway classes, their sophomore year. And so sophomore Introduction to Agriculture, junior, junior year, Agriculture, Food and Natural Resources. First semester, Semester 2, Animal Science. Semester 1, Senior Year, Plants and Horticulture Science. And Semester 2, Senior Year, Agriculture, Capstone. And so within that, some of the pathway options are to take a CCP course in agriculture. We already talked about the opportunity to participate in 4H and FFA. And then another opportunity is the ability to be able to earn a 12-point Nursery Tech Grower Certification. So that's another option for industry certification as well.
So one other task that we were charged with is making these pathways available to kids in other buildings between Thurgood and Dunbar. So this first slide represents the courses that will be offered at Paul Lawrence Dunbar, Dunbar High School, that students from Thurgood Marshall can access. And the idea would be that students would start their day, Period 1, at Paul Lawrence Dunbar. They would stay for a two-period block, either two courses or one course that this is, you know, stretched out to cover the time of two periods. And then during Period 3, they would be transported back to Thurgood Marshall and would resume their school day at Thurgood Marshall for periods 4 through 7. That would allow them to be in the building after school for study tables, athletic practices, and so on. If you want to go to the next slide. These would be the classes that are going to be offered at Thurgood Marshall. Again, some of them are one period in length, some of them are two periods in length, some of them are blocks of time. We've got a little work to do on that Arts and Communication Pathway. There's some, there's some, we need to, we need to develop that a little bit more. But the same idea, where Dunbar students would start their day at Thurgood Marshall, access periods 1 and 2 pathway classes, and then they would be transported back to Dunbar to resume their school day at their home school for periods 4 through 7. We met with transportation, and we think this is all very doable, that we would have two buses crossing paths rather than shuttling, so that students don't have to waste that entire Period 3 block waiting and waiting. They can get back to their school, maybe they're held in the library as a study hall until they can get back on track with, with the rest of their peers in the school. So that's kind of how we have it laid out for the shared campus model. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones to talk a little bit about the curriculum development.
Okay, in terms of curriculum development, I want to preface describing that process with the level of excitement that the teachers expressed. I think that was probably the most rewarding experience, having gone through this process. And going to the teachers and asking them about whether or not they have some interest in developing curriculum in biotech or agriculture. No pushback, no negativity, no negativity whatsoever. And so, in answering the question, how are teachers? Our teachers are building the curriculum for the students. Our teachers know the students, they have a content specialization, and they're collaborating with community partners to build this curriculum out for our students. Okay? And so that's how it's being done at the secondary level, at the high school level, rather. At the middle school level, we'll have some teachers involved in Project Lead the Way, but there will also be academic coordinators from the Curriculum Department to help facilitate some of the curriculum for middle schoolers. But again, I cannot reiterate, and that's where, at the beginning of the presentation, we shared with you that this may be something that, that helps to retain teachers. This is exciting for the teachers that have engaged this work. And so I just want to thank the board for this opportunity to share with you what we would like to do for the students of DPS. Thank you, Dr. Lali. And if you guys have any questions, we would like to fill those at this time.
Thank you all for the presentation. Are there any questions? Dr. Pickton?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to know how many students are involved in this, because I know that you guys are testing. How many have we identified so far?
So we're aiming for 15 per pathway. So we're aiming for 15 per pathway. Yep, so between the seven pathways, that'll be from each school, yep, 15.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Questions on the other end? Y'all gotta raise your hand, I got to see, uh, board member Whit Gaya.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. It was really wonderful, I'm super excited.
Thank you.
Um, I just have, uh, one recommendation, um, that, you know, I've recently been up to the Liddy Camp there, the STEM camp for the little kids, and whatever curriculum, you know, and I'm so, uh, thank you for indicating that our, our staff are excited to participate in creating this work, uh, that it be as engaging as possible. Those kids, like, when they can touch, feel, move, see, they can learn, uh, yeah, the little kids, and I'm sure the bigger kids do too. So, um, any, um, you know, thing that you can do to make sure they're moving, I even like the movement back and forth, I think that takes a lot of their energy and kind of, you know, you know, positions it out. So, um, so yeah, just I would encourage the curriculum to be as interactive as possible. Let them touch it, see it, feel it. I felt like STEM, for the first time, it was like Montessori for math and science. It felt like that, it really did. Uh, so, anyway, so kudos for the good work, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Is that enough? Well, I want to say thank you all, because I know how hard I have personally been pushing you all to. Are you raising your hand?
I'm sorry.
You know I can't, look, this is, we gonna have our feet. Okay. One second, board member Sampson.
Thank you so much. Um, a couple of questions for me. Um, I have a lot of questions, but I'm only going to ask a few of them. Um, what are the requirements, I've seen the DPSU, what is the requirements for a student to be considered for DPSU?
Uh, we looked at grade point and we, and, and at their test scores, and, um, and then to actually take these college credit plus courses, they have to pass the placement exam at Sinclair. So we looked, we started looking at 3.0 grade point, but we are a little bit below that mostly, um, and, um, and looking at, at standardized test scores, some, if those are helpful, if they would help the students, bring that up, and then they'll have to pass the placement test, which is a, a national, it's a writing exam, it's a writing test.
Okay, my second question is, um, the pathways that have been selected, how were they selected for these individual buildings? With another question, do these pathways already exist in other high schools?
I'll go in reverse. Uh, the pathways resemble other, uh, high schools programming. Um, we use the data to drive what pathways, uh, we wanted to implement, uh, and, uh, based on the expertise of the, the teachers in the building, uh, that's kind of how we determined, you know, that agriculture would go to Dunbar, biotech, we have a phenomenal biotech teacher, CCP teacher, uh, and so, we, we kind of base it on our, our, our capacity in each building and expertise.
Um, two more questions. How are the current scholars of Thurgood and Dunbar going to be selected to be in these pathways? Like, will there be a lottery, are they gonna, how will they be able to select if they're interested in that pathway?
Um, so, I can't speak for both buildings, but here at Thurgood, I did, um, surveys, we did send surveys out to both buildings, the students took them in language arts class, um, and they looked at all the courses, what courses they would be interested in, they could choose from one through four, um, choose your top four classes. Um, when numbers weren't coming back the way we wanted, I sat right up here in the lunchroom, and I'm like, alright, here's all the classes, hype them up real good, who wants to take this class? Um, and students came, signed up, and I sent them to the counselors. So it was their choice of what they wanted to take, they were able to look at the, um, little snippets, not quite curriculum, but just the snippets of what the classes were, um, and they went for that. Once I told them where some of the classes were, some students were excited about going to other buildings, some not so much, but we had to be completely transparent and let them know that some of these classes were not in their building. So, it was up to the students.
And I will add that, um, we also, I mean, students were kind of timid, you know, about going over to another school, they see biotech, uh, they think, oh, that's difficult. Um, but, um, not only did we beckon for students to come to us, for some kids that we, that we knew, uh, would benefit, we had one-on-one conversations with them. And so, um, after having the one-on-one conversations with Ms. Bailey, uh, Ms. Mole, myself, here during lunch, in the hallways, um, we signed them up, so we, we kind of recruited as well.
Um, last question for me, well, really not the last question, but it's the last question now. Um, it is great to hear that teachers are excited about building, um, these pathways. I do have a question, though, what are we doing to attract industry professionals in these individual pathways? Teachers, we all have limited expertise in these different pathways, what are we doing to attract the expertise of individuals who serve in any of these pathways?
So surprising, a lot of the teachers are reaching out to the local colleges and to industry professionals. Um, where do we go, what was that place called? Uh, STEM? I can't remember. But, uh, they have like simulators, so we took teachers out there, uh, to engage with, uh, parachute jump, um, the grill, yes, that's what it's called. Um, but they have offered a plethora of services and resources to Thurgood, and I'm sure they, they do the same, uh, for Dunbar as well. But that's what their sole purpose is, to serve us.
I'm sorry, keep interrupting you, Dr. Jones. We also worked very closely with Montgomery County, uh, Business Advisory, uh, Brian Stewart, and his connections with the, uh, business organizations, um, that want to be part of, um, helping develop, uh, their workforce. So there, there were many, um, individuals and local companies that want to be part of this that we're working with, uh, through Montgomery County's, uh, BAC.
Okay, that's it for now.
Do you want a response on how Dunbar attracted? You only got Thurgood, then you moved on.
Yeah, that's fine, yep.
She was saying, if you want it. She was thumbing up, and then she stopped, like, I guess.
See, I was trying to get you off the hook, but she's the one that did it.
That's okay. Uh, so we called, actually, um, each grade level down to the cafeteria, and we talked about all of the different pathways, so we had, um, like, forms created for them to choose, like, first, second, and third choice. And so we had a conversation about all of the different pathways, the ones at, um, Dunbar, the ones at Thurgood, we let the students ask any questions that they had, um, and so then they filled out the sheets, um, for, you know, their first, second, and third choice pathways. And then, um, we also stayed in contact with the counselors, um, so we started a sheet once we got them to see what names, because the, we only did it one day, everybody wasn't there, to see what names weren't there. And then the counselors started to call down, you know, small groups of those students at a time, um, to the library, so that we can try to get as many of the students, uh, so they would have their choice as possible.
Thank you.
All right, board member Smith, Vice President Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. So we talked about, um, the transportation aspect on, after that first block, what does it look like for our scholars in getting to school in the morning at work? Have we had those conversations, and are those taking place on, you know, for, how do we make sure that this student who attends this school knows that they have to get over to this school in the morning? Or if, you know, I know we had a few schools who had study tables, and some who had, uh, some, I know they did some weightlifting in some schools in the morning, like, what would that look like then for a scholar who might have some before-school things? Um, and then differently, what is it, that conversation looking like on making sure that they get to the school that they need to be at in the morning?
Well, certainly, we would let kids and parents understand that they would start their day at their alternate site, but in those, those situations that you're describing, where a kid might be lifting weights before school, I mean, we would have to work with transportation to figure out how to make that kind of a transport happen. But the idea would be you get dropped off at your first-period class school, and then we'll get you home third period.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? I had a couple, myself. So I heard you guys talk a lot about how you allow the students to choose. What type of parent involvement or engagement has occurred for this process?
I would say probably minimal at this point, but I would say, I would share that we've got a flyer that summarizes the programs at both schools. Um, Alex Kincaid's, in her office, is putting this together. This will go home by mail to families of Thurgood and Dunbar students, and we're going to follow that up with a postcard about two weeks after that, and then, of course, share these through all of the vehicles that her department uses.
Okay, if I could request, I know we have Juneteenth coming up on Monday, if we could at least have some tables at some of the events around, I mean, those would be good opportunities to connect with individuals that are, are, are potential market and actually have some FaceTime with some individuals, and festivals in general that are going on in our area.
Um, I'd just like to address that, we have a meeting tomorrow morning to divvy up who's going to which festivals, uh, in the city, and we'll make sure that we have these flyers available for them to, to share and pass out there, along with other information that we have, um, that's been produced by our PIO, uh, department.
Okay, a follow-up to that one, on the flyer, if a person is interested in finding out more information about this, what steps should they take?
It's, uh, it's located on the flyer. Um, I have a Google Voice number that, uh, parents will text, I'll give them a call back and explain, um, the program.
Okay, simple enough. Well, thank you all, it does look like you guys put, oh, sorry, every time I say thank you, another one pops up.
Just one more.
Board member Sampson.
Thank you. If, um, if a student, and I'm sure y'all had this conversation, if a scholar decides that this pathway is not for them, do, are they required to stay in it for the semester, a quarter, uh, the whole year? If not, if they get out of pathway, what classes do they go to af, if they decide this is not for them?
So they, they follow the same, uh, drop, drop rules, uh, 10 days for the first quarter, um, but certainly, we wouldn't want to hold students captive in, um, in a space that's undesirable to them. And so, uh, we will make whatever concessions we need to make to ensure that that student is in the proper pathway or in a generalist, uh, pathway, if you will.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions? Third time's a charm. So again, I want to thank you all for the work that you have put into this, this process and this program, because I know I myself have been pushing you a lot, and will continue to push you, because I think you guys came up with some really good stuff. So thank you, and yes, anything else?
No, I just want to thank you all.
The mic's not on.
I want to thank you also, uh, I know that we spent an inordinate amount of time together, and then you spend an inordinate amount of time with each other, uh, finishing out and planning, so thank you so much for all your creativity and the work.
All right, I believe we have one more presentation, and this one is actually from Dr. Lawrence, is the team.
Good evening, my name is Kathy DeFaire, I'm with Nutrition Services, and I've been the director there for the last 21, the director there recently, and I've been with Dayton Public for 23 years. I know I'm not as pretty as Dr. Lawrence, but he put me up here first, so, thank you. Next slide. I want to share some information about our department, and then we'll kind of go through some of the budget information. We have about 100 dedicated employees in our schools that provide the meals for our students, and we have two coordinators in the office that go to each school and provide oversight and guidance. We have six central office staff that support the school-based staff, and they provide the reports that we're required to have for the Ohio Department of Education. There are several programs that we participate in, um, all of them run through the United States Department of Agriculture, the USDA, and then our oversight comes through the Department of Education with, in the Division of Child Nutrition. So our two main programs are, of course, the National School Breakfast Program and the National School Lunch Program. Just a quick fact, in that year 22, 23, that we just ended, we served over 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,162,000 breakfasts and, oh, around a million and a half lunches. Other programs that we participate in are the After School at Risk Snack Program, that allows us to serve maybe a snack item and a juice to students who are staying after school, in tutoring programs and athletic programs. We also run summer programs all through town that provide meals that's supporting summer activities that are going on. That can be in churches, in recreation centers, parks, housing developments, um, anywhere we have what we hope is a concentration of kids that need food. In addition to that summer program, we are partnered with the Ohio State Food Bank to participate in the Mobile Food Bank, which allows us to provide fresh, um, produce items to families, so the kids are allowed to take home the different produce items each week. And then we also are running the Governor's Weekend Backpack Program, and that is backpacks provided through, again, the Ohio, um, State Food Bank, and they're allowed to take those home for the weekend. We also provide daycare meals to select facilities around town that we contract with, and, uh, one interesting fact is that we are licensed as a meat and poultry plant in order to do that. So it's a little odd, but we are a meat and poultry plant. We want to start this year a supper program, it's one of my chief goals. Um, we're planning to kind of expand our existing snack program, where we can only offer, like I said, two different things, and move into offering a full meal. I understand that the board is interested in pushing forward and having our, our communities more involved in our schools, and having our schools open later, so we think that will be a nice addition to that program. I just want to share one, um, key performance indicator with you, and it is the average of breakfast and lunch participations. And the reason I want to share this is because it's a great measure of student satisfaction. I have never heard a student say, I just love school, like, it's the best stuff I ever had. You just don't hear that. So, we need to look at data to see how we're reaching the kids, are we succeeding, or are we not hitting the mark with our children? So, we're benchmarked against Council of Great City Schools here, and that's the one in the gold, that one shows for the breakfast, about 38% of the children nationwide in the large districts, and for a median breakfast. When we look at ours here at Dayton Public Schools, I give you five years to look at, um, I tend to ignore the short one, because that was our COVID year, it's not representative of what happens in our schools. So when I average the other four, we come up with 62% of our kids choose to eat with us, so against the 38% that we see nationwide. Next slide. Same thing we're seeing with the average lunch participation, we, when I average our statistics here at Dayton Public Schools, we are averaging 82 to 83%. Council of Great City Schools shows right around 58% of the students nationwide that are in a free and reduced category are choosing to eat at their schools. So, we are showing very well against the other people that, that we are benchmarking. Next slide. So the financial aspects of Nutrition Services, um, we have a separate fund, which is Fund Six, and it is an enterprise fund. That means that we essentially are tasked to run as a small business. Our income comes primarily from federal meal reimbursements, and our primary goal, of course, is to provide exciting nutritious meals for our students. I am very aware that we need to continue to focus on remaining self-sufficient, or self-supporting. Um, that's the reason I haven't had to come before the board for, um, 10 years, is we have maintained that. So, um, we work hard to make sure that we can support the activities of Nutrition Services, because we are backed, of course, by the General Fund. So if we fail, General Fund then has to come up with funds to, um, support the program. The district currently is on the Community Eligibility Provision, which is called the CEP, and that allows us to feed all of our students at no charge. Currently, we receive reimbursement on 99.98% of the meals that we serve. One exception to that this year was the International School, because that was, um, a brand-new school and had no data to support. and had no data to support the CEP. So we had to run that under Provision Two. So next year, we are hoping to roll it into the CEP. Next slide. All right. The influences that I see on our Fund Six balance. Over the past year since fiscal year 11, we have averaged a gain in our fund of close to $2 million. The one year that we did lose money was fiscal year 21 and that was due to COVID closures and increases in expenses and food and wages. Those are the years that we were, you know, providing food out to the community and I know we had help from Dr. Lally. I remember working next to her over there at Wright Brothers and, but that year we did all we could to support our community and it's, it's pretty surprising that we really didn't lose much money at all. We also gave a significant raise to the Operations Union that was for July 23, June of '23 and that increased wages by approximately $700 to $900,000 a year. We also had a huge increase in the cost of food and supplies. It's, when I do the math, it's about 27%. And unfortunately, we just got our bids back from our buying group and we're looking at another 10% increase coming for the next year. We now, at this point, have aging schools, so I'm expecting increases in the, the equipment replacement that will be needed. And fortunately, to offset this, we have had an increase in federal reimbursements per meal. Next slide. Dear, that did not come out right. It looked a lot different before, but as you can see, this is the past five years and our total expenditures had been averaging about eight to eight and a half million prior to this year. As you can see, I'm expecting to end up right around $10 million and that is due to those, you know, increases in both labor and supplies. Next slide. When you look at the payroll expenses, you can see that we were three, three and a, I'm sorry, about three and a half million and now we're up to 4.3 million in payroll. Next slide. When we look at the Fund Six annual changes, some years, you know, we've, you know, had a surplus of three, three and a half million. Other years, it's been, you know, closer to two with that average that I mentioned before of close to $2 million a year. When you look at '22 and '23, I think this is our future. You know, with the increases we've seen in expenses, we are now kind of reaching a plateau. We're still accruing about $1 million a year to $1 million and a half and I think that's what it will look like going forward. Next slide. All right. This is looking at fund balance over time. As you see, it's grown, grown, grown and we are now sitting at $21,700,000 in Fund Six. Again, though, you see the last two years, we're tapering off that growth. Next slide. So where are we headed financially? I expect a slowing and actually a decrease in the Fund Six balance. As I mentioned, we are sitting at $21,700,000 right now and by the regulations, Fund Six is expected to have no more than three months of expenses on hand, which if you do that math, that's approximately three and a half million. So we're up here and we're supposed to be down here. So we do need to focus on spending money in positive ways that will provide great things for our students and get us back into regulations. Always, my focus will remain that we will continue to have a positive fund balance and remain self-supporting as we look at the changes going forward. Next slide. So how do we spend O6 funds? They are federal funds, which means they have federal spending guidelines, which are difficult and time-consuming to follow. The funds are only to be used for the benefit of child nutrition programs. They come with a lot of strings, so it's tough to find projects. I know there have been things that, you know, had, there's been some interest in doing that, you know, when I check with child ODE, child nutrition, they're not allowed. For example, expenses over $5,000 have to be pre-approved by the Office of Child Nutrition unless they come on a pre-approved list. Pre-approved list contains things like kitchen equipment, things that they would obviously expect us to purchase, ovens, steamers, things like that. Next slide. So we're focusing on projects. Some of these we've already completed, others we are in the process of working on. Next slide. The first one was refrigerated delivery trucks. We did purchase three new trucks last year and it had bothered me for years that we had giant billboards driving all around town with white sides. So we went ahead and wrapped them this year. And so we put healthy slogans on them, you know, focusing on food and then obviously Dayton Public School colors and Dayton Public School logo. Next slide. Equipment replacement. We have developed what we call our equipment replacement schedule and that we evaluate our equipment, equipment every year with whether it is time to replace it. We've set timelines for certain things like refrigeration. For those of you who have any dealing with refrigeration, they don't last like they used to. So refrigerators, you know, have a 10 to 12-year life. So we start looking at them and deciding when to replace them. Next slide. One of the projects we completed the first phase of is a dish machine installations. We have installed at Meadowdale High School, Thurgood Marshall, Belmont and Dunbar, this model of a Hobart dish machine that allows us to maintain labor costs and it improves our sanitation. Next up is Stivers. Their dish machine, I'm sorry, their dish machine has, it's not doing very well, so it's time to get that one replaced. And then we'll be looking at the larger elementary schools when, when we have space to add a dish machine. Next slide. We have completed Phase One of our elementary cafeteria design. There's still two more phases to go. This is Kaiser and it's representative of most of our cafeteria spaces and our serving lines. Very plain walls, serviceable, good in condition, but very, very plain. Next slide. So we hired an interior designer and this is what he came up with. This one, they're individualized for each school, so this one's called the PAW. And then if you'll notice, they have what we call character words that seem to resonate with all of the principles. So they're thankful, fun, different words up there for the kids to read. And he made sure that there were some small ones for our little guys and then longer words to challenge our older kids. All of the designs are very colorful. They have lots of depth, different pictures, things for the kids to focus on and look at. Next slide. So this is Edison. Again, Eagles Nest Cafe personalized to the school along with all the character words, color, shapes. Next slide. This next one is Cleveland. We took a different turn on this. Principal Mims actually wanted to have Dayton history. So that whole wall is full of facts on Dayton history. So when the kids are lined up and look, watching, I mean, waiting for their meal, they get the chance to actually read the different parts of the Dayton history. Next slide. This is Bell Haven, Bob Catway Cafe. Again, character words and color and shape. Next slide. And Waggeman was the final one in that phase. This is a little bit older for the kids that are there at Waggeman. Next slide. For the high schools, we're looking at total serving line overhauls and the idea is to make them look more like a cafeteria in a university or college and to provide different serving areas for different types of products to be served. So we started with Stivers primarily because the equipment at Stivers is not in good condition and does need to be replaced. We also have designs in the works for Thurgood Marshall, Meadowdale High School and Dunbar and Pometts, so almost all the rest of the high schools. So they're all in the works. Next slide. Hydroponic Towers. I know Karen Rickannon and I talked about this in a hallway and so I looked into it. And Hydroponic Towers, this particular company has a lot of educational material developed to go along with these hydroponic towers with the idea of getting students involved and, you know, learning to plant them, watch them grow. And these things can be served in the cafeterias. They can also be used to start plants for the outdoor gardens as well. Next slide. The final one, which is the big project for the year, the supper program, which I already mentioned, you know, I do expect to have some costs associated with that, which will probably or should be taken care of through the reimbursements. We should see increased labor hours for our people and we may need equipment to run the program, such as packaging equipment particularly. And we may need to see a particular production space developed for that. This happens to be a picture of the machine that we bought during COVID. We were running out of opportunities to have prepackaged food, so we purchased this machine and packaged food for, to send home to our kids. So we do have this one on hand and we may, may potentially need others. So those are the projects we already have lined up. We will be working to develop more going forward and that's it. Next slide. Any questions?
Thank you for coming out. Let me open up. Board members, do you have any questions? Vice President Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I really appreciate the thorough detail and I really like seeing some of the opportunities that we do have. When we talk about ways that we need to spend some of this fund balance, are there any plans in the works to try to engage the community, our students, parents around what are some of the things they want to see? Knowing that that is a big, at lunchtime is a big part of, you know, their day. That's that, that decompression time for some, that's that time some can see those friends. Are we looking at, and I really definitely appreciate the thought of the high school serving lines and having those separate options, but I definitely think there's a opportunity here. And I know you had said something earlier about how, you know, it's one of those things, we don't always love school lunches. But I think we're in a, a middle point where we can kind of push back against that with us needing to spend some of that fund balance and thinking of creative ways. What are some of the things that we could create in a way to make lunch exciting and then add to some of the offerings? So, but I would ask that we try to involve some of our students and parents in that kind of process so they can feel some of the ownership of that as well. But I want to say I appreciate you.
Great. Thank you. Board Member Whit Gaya.
Thank you. Wonderful work. I appreciate it. I'm so excited about the hydroponic towers. I know you know that. On the, the potential of the dinner program, supper program, do you have any indicators of numbers of students that we think that could potentially use an opportunity like this? And on that, is that something that's intended? I know you mentioned the machine that kind of covers things for them to take home. Is it intended as like a takeaway type thing or service there?
No. Most of the programs require that we stay on site, so it's not intended as takeaway. But in order to have enough labor going around, I am thinking it probably will end up being a prepackaged, you know, a package like that that is then held in a warmer until the programs are able to serve it. Now, right now, we actually have supper programs running throughout the district and it's actually been a concern of mine. I believe it's being done well, but just like I think I mentioned, the daycares where, you know, we, we provide daycare meals to people. There's another company who is actually providing meals within our school system without any oversight. So I've spoken to Dr. Lawrence about that and we'll get back to you with some plans on that. But we do have supper programs being offered to our students already and I do not have numbers on that, but we are serving about 600 snacks throughout the district. So the snacks, I know I would be converting up into a supper program and, you know, there are more available out there within the district.
Thank you. I'd be interested too, and as Board Member Smith indicated, I'd like to hear in the O6 funds, you know, the, what we've built up, how we can get input from our community and use those funds as, yeah, as broadly and widely as possible, certainly fitting within the parameters of what we're supposed to. So thank you. I appreciate you.
I think maybe the best might be I will get ideas from ODE or if you have ideas, I can certainly pass them by ODE and then, you know, offer out a selection of things that can be done instead of things I have to say no to all the time. You know, we don't want to do that.
Does your nutrition services go to the entire community or is it just come the newsletter? I know there is some sort of newsletter. Does it go out to the whole community?
No, it would only go within the district or, you know, out on robot calls and things like that, the information.
Interesting. Maybe something we could use in terms of gathering information. So thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions? I have one myself. School vending machines, would that fall under nutrition services?
It does.
Is that an opportunity? Because some schools have them and I think the school we're in right now, I don't see one at all. Is that something that we can look into of getting those at all, at least at our high schools?
Yes. This school actually did have it. We removed it after it was destroyed twice. So we can, we can try again, you know? Honestly, if we anchor it to the wall, it'll have better success. But yes, we can put them back in the high schools and move forward with it. Are you looking at opportunities for the students or?
No, I just hear, I hear when I walk through some of the schools that don't have them, like why don't we have these? And I'm like, I don't, I really don't know. So now if someone is here who I can ask.
Perfect.
I ask and you just heard it on the tape though, we can get them back and yeah.
We can.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next presentation. Oh, it's another refresh. It's not transportation. Okay. Yep. Still under Dr. Lawrence, the transportation.
Good evening, Dr. Goodwin, Dr. Lally, Vice President Smith and other board members. I'm Craig Anderson. I've been with transportation just shy of five months after several years, 25-plus years in private industry and other ventures. I'm here today. Also, Mr. David Beard is here. He'll over, he'll give an overview of our garage and fleet. And also Mr. Terrence Jackson, Director Jackson is here with us today. Next slide, please. We provide in transportation, we provide the community with safe, professional, efficient transportation for eligible students. For example, the championship athletes that were here today, we provide transportation to state meets, other schools, et cetera, throughout the school year. We also provide transportation to field trips and we transport year-round. During the summer, we have several summer camps, approximately 30 routes we're running. So it's year-round transportation to and from athletic events, as I mentioned. Roughly 8,000 miles per day is what we transport and over 1.5 million per school year. Next slide. Our current team is made up, and this is through May, 118 drivers. We will get to 125 drivers. We've hired roughly one driver per week this calendar year, January through May. We'll continue on that trend. Forty pair professors are where we are now. We would like another five. We'll continue to hire six mechanics. We would like to get to 10, one of which will be a body shop mechanic and Mr. Beard will explain them more in detail there. Three clericals, we would like to add one more clerical. So we're not far off. We've, we have a net gain of approximately 30 employees between the drivers and pairs. So just making it a great place to be, following through on things and that's what we believe will help with our attrition. Next slide, please. Just a quick overview. LWC provided this earlier this year. This is how our new transportation center will look after about a year of renovations. We're going to begin that process in August. In fact, this weekend, Saturday, we're already preparing, office staff, administrators, et cetera. We're boxing up our office materials, our personal effects, and they will be moved to the service building this weekend. So we will be out of the transportation center by June 30th. By the end of July, the process will begin where the renovations will, will begin at that building. So more details will come there, but we're super excited. This is what we believe will really drive attrition, not attrition, I'm sorry, minimize that, but drive retention of our, our pairs, our mechanics, our drivers, et cetera. So we're super excited there. And you could see we adapted the logo, the DPS, the Dayton Public Schools logo and the scheme, the colors there. Next slide, please. Busy chart here, but what we wanted to detail is we ended the school year by running 104 routes right at the very top there and through, from December through May, you could see improvement. We did dip down to 91 routes being covered, 91 drivers in February. Weather-related played, you know, played a part there. But March, April and May, we certainly improved. Driver attendance improved 5.3% in six months and that led to nine, from 91.3 to over 96% route coverage. So we had a strong finish with some systems and processes being added in this summer. We look forward to having a strong start to the next school year. So as I mentioned, several days in May, we had 100% route coverage, not only in the morning, but the afternoon. So next slide, please. This is our expenditures. FY 2023 is year-to-date and FY 2024 is what we will request that you approve, roughly the same. There may be some inflationary impact there, but we believe we can hold our costs in line as far as the non-payroll expenses as we go throughout the school year. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Now, Mr. Beard will cover the garage and fleet.
Good evening. Thank you for your attention. My name's Dave Beard. I'm a Marine veteran. This is my third year with Dayton Public Schools. I've got 26 years in automotive and fleet maintenance and management retail. And I'm ASE Master certified still at this time. I got to brag a little bit. We've been somewhat understaffed with mechanics, but we've had the second year in a row where we've had 100% pass rate with our Ohio State Patrol inspections. We do want to continue to build our team. We would request a budget for 10 mechanics, one which being a body mechanic. We've spent a pretty good amount of money this year on bodywork, subletting bodywork out when we have a functional body shop on site. Optimal buses per mechanic are 15 to 18. National average is actually a little higher than that because of mechanic shortages. Their, their good ones are hard to come by. We've got 31 buses on order, 15 of which you approved back in May. I've got another 16 that I've been able to source and they will all have air conditioning on them when we receive them. The 16 we're hoping to get by the end of September, maybe sooner. We may have some of them before that time. As far as expenditures go, we, we did save some money on tires this year. We spent about $60,000. That's down from 130. We had a lot of new tires on buses that were going to be decommissioned. My predecessor had put new tires on a lot of the older buses. And rather than just waste them, they're still in good condition, they're still not out of date, we were able to cycle those out and use those to, to save some money there. I do expect that to go back up this year with oil prices being increased. Tires are made from oil, so they, we will see some volatility in that. As well as the fuel expenditure, we, we show a decrease. That's a little deceptive because we were fueling the first student last year on site for them. So I do expect that to probably go back up closer to the, to the 1.2, or 1.27. But at this point, we'll do what we can. We keep the buses running in top condition so that they're as fuel efficient as possible. Some time ago, I came before you and we talked about retrofitting the older buses with air conditioning. I have that program finally worked out and we're going to start on that. We're going to do the special needs buses first because I think those, the children are the most risk from heat. So we're going to start cycling those through and get those with your approval. We'll start cycling those through and getting air conditioning put on those. Efficiency-wise, maintenance software and parts procurement systems are now in place so that we can be compliant and control our costs. And, and both of those are, are working very well. We worked hard last year to get those in place with your help. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? I just have one for you. I know we've been talking in one of the committees that we're on about the technology required for being able, the students to use their bus pass, I mean their IDs to scan on there. Is that same technology going to be on the buses that we are expecting to come in?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. We have ordered, as we've ordered, the buses already have REI equipment staged up so that we, well, not only we'll have that, but we'll have live data. We'll be able to see the, the buses live through the cameras with system that you've already approved again in May. But yes, all of the new buses will be equipped with the badge, badge readers.
Okay. And with the retrofitting, what's the timeline on the entire fleet being completed?
I sh, I'm, I'm confident we can get it done through, by the end of the school year, next year. It, it does take some time there, having to go to North Carolina and lots. That's, we couldn't, couldn't come up with a source locally that was willing to do it, that we felt comfortable with. And this is actually the, the installer that puts the air conditioning in the Thomas buses when they're built. So we'll have warranty train and also parts supply.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions before? All right. Board Member Whit Gaya?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate you both. From an employee standpoint or from our, our drivers, are we doing any work this summer with regard to professional development around customer service and how we're greeting our customers every day? And, you know, these are kind of, you know, vulnerable points of communication a lot of times for our students and our families and just trying to do everything we can to see that our employees are equipped with the tools that they need to manage a lot of these situations because communication is difficult. So, yeah, could you talk about that a little bit? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. We have begun to set up systems and processes that we will use during the next school year, approximately a week and a half prior to the school year beginning on Monday, August 14. We'll have the drivers in and the pairs to review professional development, some in service days. We're going to look for some external speakers to come in, maybe from Wright State or UD to cover professional development, maybe some industry leaders, while also using others internal to Dayton Public Schools. Dr. Williams did a great job and others helping us through professional development during our previous professional development day. So yes, we look to continue that. We have some drivers working this summer, but everyone will be back as they practice their routes and run early August.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all. I don't see any other questions. We really appreciate you giving us a presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Lowly, your first recommendation?
First recommendation is?
Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry.
Turn your mic on.
Yeah, thank you. First recommendation is approval of the HR agenda as listed.
All right. Is there a motion? Turn your mic on. Thank you. Is there a second? Turn your mic on.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second. Are there any questions? Board Member Sampson?
Madam President, I would like to, I made a request that certain items be pulled. It doesn't look like they were. So I am requesting that item 47, 51, 173 to 177 be pulled for vote.
Okay. Any other questions? Board Member, Vice President Smith?
Thank you. Don't say it. Thank you. On, I know we had brought it up, it was brought up at a previous conversation around some of our summer positions. And I know that, know some of the conversation was around things of the contract and things like that. I will request, if possible, Dr. Lawrence and our treasurer and our superintendent, anyone needed to kind of come together and see if there's some kind of way to, to assist those that are in these positions. I know we've, as a board, looked at how do we write some of the things that we've done. I know we just did some things with helping to pay some of our assistant coaches and creating some of those for people who have helped our students and we've looked at and did things for those in study tables. So looking at some of these positions, I would request that we look at some kind of, if there is some kind of creative way to look at that, because some of these wages, I just feel is for the work that our people are doing and have them coming in and doing it for those at that price point, just doesn't sit well with me. So I would request that we try to come up with some way to help with that.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions myself. The first one, I see on line 237 and 238 where we have a person over, working the same time period? Is that correct? I mean, it's two different jobs, but is that like one of the ways that we're trying to remedy some of these things?
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Lowly, Treasurer Abraham. We have bus cleaning. So we wash the buses because the, the wash barn does not work. So we manually wash them and so we're still doing that work this summer. And with a fleet with over 150 buses, it takes time. So the custodian goes to work at seven in the morning, then leaves, comes over to transportation, works a couple hours and then goes back to custodial work.
Okay. So is it, it is two different positions?
Yes, two different, two different, yes, two different positions.
Okay. Okay. And then I have a second follow-up question, not necessarily for you, Dr. Lawrence, but from, I think we are now about three or four meetings out regarding the retro pay for our cheerleading coaches. Seeing how we're in June now, we're coming to the end of this, this budget cycle, what is the status of that being brought forward?
Hi, good evening. I can speak to, we in HR have processed the increases that were boarded. So there would need to be a board action if we're adding additional retro pay. We have boarded everything that was, excuse me, processed everything that was boarded from the retro date of March 21st. So we've not gotten any additional direction to make any additional retro payments.
Okay. So I think now that, Dr. Lowly, where, where are we at in that one?
Where, where did we, I know that we had the retro pay figured. Where is that sitting right now?
That's all been processed. Once it was boarded for?
What does it mean processed?
So paid out. So we had a June 9th pay and I believe also on the June 23rd pay, if I calculated that two weeks quickly. Correct, both June payments, coaches will be paid at the correct rate with retro, including retro to March 21, which is when the board action resolution stated to retro to.
So it'll be paid out this paycheck?
Yes, between the two June paycheck.
The red, the retro.
The retro to March 21st. Yes.
Board Member Sampson, you, you did the best with my memory on dates. Was March, you said 21st?
21st, yes.
Is that the date that we agreed on?
There was the question that I raised, March 21st was given. My question still hasn't been answered about those that should be retro that were serving in the position prior to March 21st. What is the decision as relates to them being retro paid?
There, there was no decision about that being retro paid because the, of the financial situation that we're in. We just need some directive from the board. We, we took it from the date that the board approved it, figured out the retro pay with the athletic department and had that processed. So the, the board would need to, the, if you recall, the original proposal was for retro back to July 1. And that was pulled off or not voted on or changed before the actual vote for the board.
Okay. Madam? Go ahead, sorry.
I was about to say, so if someone can present to us what athletics presented to HR, because I know there was the conversation that because of the amount of retro it would have been, there was consideration of a lump sum. That was not presented as relates to what that lump sum was. So if athletics and HR and what other department could just, and the treasury could just present to us what information was given and what that retro would have looked like, I think the board can make a better decision. Thank you, Madam President.
I can, I can speak for HR that we don't have any additional information outside of the resolution that was passed. However, we're obviously willing to collaborate and process whatever is determined to be best moving forward. But HR itself doesn't have anything additional to share.
So athletics didn't submit any more information like retro from July?
I know they've been asking if a July retro payment, I've, know I've heard that in conversation, but that's no decision that Human Resources would ever make. That would have to be a resolution that the board determines, yes, they do want to process with the treasurer, whether that's approved or not.
So who has that data that athletics submitted?
The, the actual data that athletics submitted for, that what she's talking about that has been processed, has been processed.
Yes.
They actually submitted to me a payment situation that we put forward to HR and they processed that. That's what she's discussing.
Yes.
But there has been no, there has been no additional July 1 to March?
21st.
21st conversation because we haven't, we haven't actually had that full directive to do that in collaboration.
Okay. If I could just make a request, because I believe it's going to come out of treasury for the positions, because this was for minor sports. So I, I'm actually asking for two things, what, what it would be from July 1 to March 23rd for all minor sports. And then also just for the cheerleading coaches, because as I recall, they were our lowest-paid individuals of the minor sports. So if we could have both of those at the next board meeting, so then the board can actually make a decision on what we're going to do in this, this budget cycle, that would be good for all of us. And if we could have that prior to coming to the meeting so people can see it and, and even talk with either treasury or the superintendent about the things that we have. Does that suffice for you, Board Member Sampson?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Are there any, go ahead, Vice President Smith?
Thank you. On a separate note, I see with some of our new hires, what are some of the things that we're doing to help these new hires as they come into the district? To help them with some of learning the buildings they're in, learning the, you know, some of the histories of the buildings and understanding that some of our buildings have had different histories, some of them had different challenges. What are some of the things that we can do so when a teacher comes in outside of the normal new teacher training, new employee? What are we doing to help them learn culture and climate and help them get acclimated there? And also looking at things, we have new hires at some of the buildings that we talked about are having new offerings this coming year. How are we helping them come on and become a new employee, someone where we're doing something totally new as well? So if you could, even if it's not something that you can go into that list, if we can prepare something to let us know, what are these kind of things that we're doing to help us retain these, these staff members and help, you know, put them in the best position for success?
Yeah. So typically, a lot of that happens at the school level because each school has its own, as you said, history and, and background. So school-based administrators do a really great job at connecting with our new hires. But that's definitely something, especially coming out of a recent customer service conversation that we want to develop in Human Resources. We see ourselves as we connect and we're the first connection with our new hires. And then we like to stay a resource with them, but we kind of pass them on to the next phase and group that they work with. So certainly things we're developing and looking to try new things. And I would love to mention that July 12th, we're having a huge job fair and we're going to advertise for all positions July 12th. We're going to run two sessions at Belmont High School's gymnasium from nine to noon and also from two to five in the hopes to get a lot of people from the community to come in and, and hear about the offerings we have here at Dayton Public Schools. But that's growth for our customer service talk. So that's a great idea.
Thank you. Follow up if I may, Madam President?
Carry on.
Thank you, ma'am. In, in line with the conversation we had earlier about the joy that our teachers found in creating, being involved in the curriculum of creating these new opportunities, I would like to ask that we kind of come up with some way to flesh out what are the things that are these new hires like to do? You know, coming in, is there a, a coaching position you would like to have help out? Is there an after-school club that you would like? Or even if it's, hey, could you, we can have some type of way to shadow some people who do after-school, people who do these kind of things to really hone in on that other side that people have? Because I think that was the, the joy that came out of seeing some of our teachers say, hey, you know, we can, we can do this program here because this is a joy of mine. I have this certification and, which means if they're doing it now, there was a time that we had them in our buildings working when they weren't utilizing this other skillset that they had. So our request that we kind of come up with something along that way, even when we talked about that customer service, even like for ourselves, to see, you know, what is it that makes you you as a new employee in Dayton Public Schools? And how can we better assist you in becoming your full potential? So I think that would be a great way. And we look at, you know, I think every year we talk about, we're looking at trying to find study table coordinators and coaches and people to do after-school programs. I think that would be a beautiful way to come in and really help people come in and learn and help them kind of get themselves into the culture. So I would make that ask.
Man, would love to.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or comment? All right. Seeing none, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote with, and again noted that there are several items pulled from the list. Can you rename the items, Board Member Sampson?
Number 47, 51, numbers 173 through 177.
You said 173 to 177. Okay. All right, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Abstain.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiganey?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Are we voting on this, or are we voting to remove items? I'm sorry. We just removed them and now we're voting-
Okay, so yes. Yeah, just agenda.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Ms. Feynhardt is not here. Four yeses, one abstain.
All right, the next recommendation?
Next recommendation?
Turn your microphone.
Next recommendation are contracts there for your review and any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Give you guys a second to look at it. All right, any questions?
Dr. Lally?
Yes, sir.
I asked my question.
Go ahead.
Dr. Lally, if you could, could you go into more detail about the PA Systems contract with Bloomer, Minnesota?
What we're trying to do for the elementary buildings for each classroom, including music, art, and physical education classrooms, is to replace the current teacher mic system. There are systems in every one of our buildings that, from what I understand, were not necessarily top of the line, so they've worn out fairly quickly. But there are microphones that our teachers wear to actually teach, and the reason for that in schools today is because of the hearing loss that children have tended to suffer over time, and it helps them be able to hear the teacher better. And that's with ESSR money, or, excuse me, that's with Title I money that we need to spend before the end of the school year, before the end of fiscal year.
Thank you. I have a follow-up to that one. It's good that we're doing them in the classroom, but I hear the PA system that we're on right now, and it is not quality. Do we have any plans for our cafetoriums throughout the district?
The plans for the high school are for, we've asked for quotes for the cafetoriums, I should say, high school, middle schools, for the cafetoriums and the gymnasiums, but we don't have that quote yet. That quote is supposed to be here by the end of this week.
Can we add the auditoriums in for our two schools that have auditoriums? Because they don't have good PA systems either.
We can add them in, but they may not be on this-
That's fine, just that way we can start thinking about them, because I see them at the, I think I was at the poetry contest at Wright Brothers, and yeah, it wasn't a good thing.
We did not do the two auditoriums.
All right, any other questions? All right, your next recommendation?
Next review are for consultants, and you can see those listed there. Just an explanation very quickly, the Ed Directions group is the group that we've been working with for six of our buildings. They're the group that sends in coaches to work with classroom teachers on a weekly, monthly basis, and the principals have requested to use some of their Title I School Improvement money to bring them in to do some summer professional development for a day to get them started and back refocused for the next school year.
All right, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Carlton and Carlton Associates, $50,000, five-month happiness leadership and team building, not to exceed $50,000. What are we getting for $50,000 on this consulting?
We're going to survey all the operations personnel, which are about 600 or 700 people. So from that survey, a quantitative survey, we're going to develop themes, then we're going to have 15 individual narrative inquiry interviews with staff from each level, from paraprofessional to bus driver to building leadership at Jackson Center and Transportation. And then after that, they're going to develop a happiness matrix, so we can measure how well we determine how happy and satisfied our employees are in operations transportation. The ultimate goal is to make sure we retain all of our staff members and that we have an environment where people want to be here in Dayton Public Schools. So that's what that is.
And another question, do we do an IRFP for this?
No, it's a single source, because it's $50,000 or less.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? Go ahead, Board Member Sampson.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Lally, as it pertains to Ed Direction, is there any data that they can share with us that shows the times that they've done this professional development that shows their effectiveness? I know we've used them in the past, but do they have any data that shows the teachers that they've worked with, have there been any increases in their scores or anything of that nature?
In cooperation with the work that we've done internally, they have claimed some of the increases that we've had in three of the six schools over the last two years. So individually, no, because we also do quality professional development as well. So I can't, if you're asking me if I can separate it out, I cannot.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, next recommendation is for the, we just said the consultant contracts, is for informational and a vote next week for me to be able to attend a professional development in Washington DC. The explanation is in executive content. I typically do not attend three professional national conferences in a school year because of the allotment that I have in my contract. However, this year, because of the National Superintendent of the Year Award, I did attend a conference, but I would like to go to an additional conference. And because I haven't and don't ever spend the amount that's allotted in my contract on my credit card, I'm just asking to kind of use that dollar amount that you've set aside over the course of time. And I have receipts for that credit card if you need to see those.
Are there any questions? All right, next recommendation?
Next recommendation is a resolution for the DSS salary schedule. I want to change a title so that it's more generic, and right now it's called Analyst Human Resources, and we want to just drop that to Analyst, because several departments have Analyst, and we need to have, we need to have some consistency as far as the title across the board. There's no change or anything in the pay rate.
Okay, any questions? Okay, next recommendation?
The next rate is the, it's for a temporary position for the flag instructor and percussion instructor that we're trying to implement with our marching band programs. It's called temporary because they're supplemental contracts. So this would be one-time payment per season, and they would work from the fall, July to November, and then March to June. And the rate for the fall person would be $3,000, the rate for the spring person would be $3,000.
Are there any questions? Board Member Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Lally, can you explain to me again why it's considered a temporary pay scale versus just a pay scale?
Because it's a supplemental contract is all.
Okay.
They work the whole supplemental contract, but it's called by terminology temporary.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions? All right, your next recommendation?
This next one for next week's vote would be a resolution to transfer funds from the Dayton Foundation number 2742 into the treasurer's office so that we can reimburse the district for money that's been paid for the Bell Haven Family Resource Coordinator through the City Connects Project. This is Matiel money, and we're just transferring it out so that we can actually reimburse the district for the payments that have been made out of general fund.
Any questions? Okay, next recommendation?
Next recommendation is an exciting opportunity between Wright State University and Dayton Public Schools. And what this is, is a program where Wright State will come in and work with several students at Thurgood Marshall High School and Belmont High School beginning in their freshman year, and support them and coach them up through their senior year. And then if they go to Wright State University, continue that support and continue that special care of them through the time that they're at Wright State University. It's called the Take Flight Program, and undergraduate, we're trying to have students take about 18 hours of undergraduate work, and Wright State will pay for $100 in their textbook vouchers per academic year. They'll give them a laptop and a backpack, and they'll have a student success coach and career consultant. And then also Wright State actually pays for the 18 hours of undergraduate tuition. So it's a great opportunity for several students from the Dayton Public Schools to participate. And again, this is for Belmont and for Thurgood Marshall as a beginning point for this program.
Okay, are there any questions? Board Member Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Lally, in this initiative, I read that one of the requirements is a 3.2. How are eighth graders, well, how is this 3.2 GPA determined if it's for freshmen? If eighth grade, if it's the eighth grade GPA coming into ninth grade, how are we communicating this opportunity early for seventh and eighth graders about the importance of GPAs?
We need to do a better job of that, Mr. Sampson, so we need to make sure that we, if you recall, a few years ago before COVID, we tried to start the Road to College Program, and that kind of went by the wayside because we were starting with sixth graders. So with our College Credit Plus program, we need to back that up and start those conversations over again and get that moving forward again. This first grouping of students this year, it'll be difficult, but if we start focusing and moving it backwards into our sixth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade programs, we should be able to do that. Because if you recall, with the Road to College Program for sixth graders, we had about 200 sixth graders who qualified at that point in time. With their MAP assessments, they were on grade level, and they were, they had the, if you want to call it a cumulative average of their grades in sixth grade at that point to be able to qualify for something like this. So we just need to get that back up and running.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, any other questions? All right, next to a discussion?
Discussion of what we need to-
I'm sorry, your next recommendation, sorry.
I was going to say, sorry.
Next recommendation is memorandum of understanding with the CROCK Center. This is the memorandum that we sign off with athletics for the intramural program, and we pay portions of the cost, and the CROCK Center pays portion of the cost. It was a very successful program last year, and a great deal of credit goes to the CROCK Center and to our athletic department and Executive Director Jones for making sure that it was well-done and carried out. It was very successful.
Okay, any questions? Okay, on to the discussion.
The discussion is, we have four modular units that we can order with the, that have actually been ordered with the ESSR money, and we need to find a location for them. If we choose to use them at a middle school to alleviate the issues that are occurring at overcrowdedness at our elementary buildings, we could only do one middle school because we need a core, we need a core classrooms for the four different core subject areas. So one middle school would have to be chosen, and then we would have to figure out how to move the sixth graders from the buildings that are overcrowded into that particular building. It is my recommendation, if we do middle school, that eighth graders be in those modular units, sixth graders and seventh graders be inside the building. And then, of course, eighth graders would come in for lunch for the elective classes that they would have, as well as the CTE program classes that we were putting in place for Edwin Joel or for Wogaman. If we decide to do this at our elementary schools, then we need to determine if it's going to be Fairview, which has 500 students right now, Bell Haven, which has 414, Valerie, which has 518, and we would put sixth grade students in two of those units, so two buildings could be chosen out of the elementaries. And sixth graders would be in the modular units to alleviate the overcrowded inside the building.
Okay, so the discussion floor is open. I mean, I'll kick it off. I like the idea of utilizing it at the middle school at EJ Brown more so, I just think it gives us a good opportunity to, as we are really shifting the culture of that building itself. I do like, I like the idea of testing to see how sixth grade will work in a seventh, eighth setting. I will say that it's my hope that the design of the inside of the trailer is phenomenal. It should be phenomenal, like you should feel like you're in a really good classroom with it. Any other thoughts? Board Member Wiganey?
Last check, we thought we had 300 enrolled seventh graders at EJ Brown. Do you have those numbers? What?
355.
355?
Correct. 355.
Seventh grade kids at EJ Brown this year, 355.
That's good. 170 in eighth grade, 355 in incoming seventh graders. So that's 524. That would become, Edwin Joel Brown becomes our largest middle school, unless we redistrict some of the students that are coming in from the elementaries that feed in there. And those elementaries that feed in there, of course, are some of the ones that are overcrowded right now.
Board, you still going? Okay, Board Member Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Lally, can you tell me, when was these, because the enrollment numbers that I got as of June 9th says that Edwin Joel Brown has 167th graders, 219 eighth graders. Where did the big jump come from, from last Friday to Tuesday?
Well, actually, actually, Mr. Sampson, I'm reading off of the five, off of the May account, so I don't have an updated one, so yours is, I didn't print off the one that you're talking about.
What I see-
So hopefully, we're better off from what you're saying.
Okay, because Edwin Joel Brown, it says 167th graders, 219 eighth graders. And as relates to, for me, my contribution to the conversation, as it relates to enrollment numbers, Valerie seems to be the school with the overpopulation, because they currently have 557 enrolled, and I know that our elementary building's capacity is 477. So to me, that's almost 100 students over, so I think, for me, my thought would be that Valerie, based off the enrollment numbers from June 9th, that Valerie would benefit the most from the trailers.
All right, we got two options out there. Anybody else?
And what about elementary school Bryant Ersgard, that school there, what are their numbers? That was pretty high, too, that elementary school.
Their numbers are high there. Kaiser and Ruskin both have large populations. They are, now, I, just in front of me, the only thing I have are the May dates. Mr. Sampson may have more current dates, but Ruskin was at 551, and Kaiser was at 585. Is that what you have?
No, ma'am. As of June 9th, both schools currently have 565.
And those numbers can go up and down regularly as we move through the summer as well. But you can anticipate that Kaiser, Ruskin, Valerie, Fairview are always going to be very large numbers. Historically, they have been. And thank you, Mr. Sampson, for bringing your updated enrollment, because I have my old one.
I think my recommendation would be that, I mean, we have to alleviate some of the overcrow- I think my recommendation would be that, I mean, we have to alleviate some of the overcrowding, clearly. I mean, we want instructors and teachers to be able to teach and students to be able to be comfortable. So my lens, perspective would have to come from where they were needed most from a volume standpoint. I mean, logically speaking. I have concern over three hundred and fifty-five seventh grade kids at EJ Brown in that building. I just trying to wrap my mind. We've never had three hundred and fifty-five kids enrolled at EJ Brown for an incoming seventh grade class, which I'm actually kind of excited about, but I want to know why, and I want to be ready for it, so I don't know what that means.
Mr. Sampson, you said the number is what now?
So as it relates to the enrolled numbers now, one sixty-seven graders at Edwin Joel Brown, two nineteen eighth graders. But I am in agreement with Ms. Whit Gagné that there is an understanding that enrollment numbers, I think in sixth grade in Dayton Public Schools, we had almost six hundred, six hundred plus numbers of students, sixth graders. And I think the last idea was three hundred and thirty, seventh graders were being, new seventh graders was coming into EJ Brown. So that is a very, very high number, if, because I don't think these numbers include the new enrollment. I don't think. Do you think they include the seventh grade, sixth graders that's going into seventh grade?
I, I need to find out. I'll, I'll ask that question tomorrow. But from what I understood, the, the numbers that I sent to you last week were the numbers that we had that we were anticipating coming in, the three fifty-five. The, the three fifty-five are coming from, i- if you think about the enrollment at Valerie, the enrollment at Bellhaven, you know, a lot of, a lot of kids will, a lot of those sixth graders are moving out of those buildings into seventh grade. And I think we're, I think we either need to think about redistricting, and we've talked about before quadrant work. We really need to think about that and look at the numbers of, of kids in each one of those grade levels in order to make sure that we don't overload one building with incoming seventh graders or incoming ninth graders, et cetera.
Okay, couple thoughts. I do, my thought, I do like the idea of using it at the elementary levels where we are vastly overcrowded and try to alleviate that. My thought around middle school is just moving sixth graders into middle school at the same time of trying to create a new program at a school where we have struggled to retain staff. And so throwing all these new things in there, then understand as a, you know, if I'm a parent of a sixth grader, and I'm thinking my sixth grader's going to finish his last year of elementary at X building, and then I get a note in the middle of the summer saying, no, your sixth grader's going to be at this school now. I think that's just more jarring to me than putting it at the elementary level. I do think that there are some ways that we need to tackle this, this, this situation we're in. And the other reason I also think, where I'm hesitant at the middle school level is knowing that, for being honest, that's that fall off where we get in our enrollment. We have a lot of people choose to go to DPS up until sixth grade, and then they do not. And so on both sides, I see some of these rationale, but I do, just at the time where we're at in the year, I would just feel more comfortable putting it at the elementary. But I definitely agree with Dr. Lawley about, we need to figure out some ways to, to solve some of these, these situations that we're at, because some of these schools have been overcrowded for a few years now.
Yes, they have.
And it's some of the same pockets in our district, so that's where I'm at.
Dr. Pickett, you got any thoughts on it?
No.
Okay.
And one, one update, I just got an update from Ms. Maney. The current seventh grade right now sitting at Edwin Joel's, three thirty. So it's still very high. Yeah, it's very high.
So it sounds like we gave you a combination of thoughts.
Say it again.
Sounds like we gave you a combination of thoughts of where we are.
Yeah, you did, so.
So ultimately, I mean, you go ahead and make a recommend, in my opinion, that you should make a recommendation, a recommendation to us of which one you believe is the, where we go.
I, I think there's a two-pronged recommendation that I would make to you right now.
Okay.
I think that we need to put two trailers in two different locations in our elementaries to ease up some of the, the overload there. The second part of that recommendation is that we take a look at the Edwin Joel Brown numbers, and we see if there's someplace that we can, on the outskirts, and I know this is not popular, but some sixth graders have not started there yet, so can we shift some of them to Belmont or some of them to Wright Brothers and even out some of these numbers? Wogaman potentially, depending on where they live. So let's take a look at the, let's take a look at a chart, see where the houses are, and see what the closest middle school would be, and see if we can redirect some of those sixth graders to a different seventh grade unit.
Yes, I may. Good one.
Can I have one thought before you go? This one?
Go ahead.
I would say with that one, I don't want to lose individuals who want to go to EJ Brown.
I understand that, yes.
If they want to go to EJ Brown, then they need to be, because I don't want, I don't want to try to relocate them, and then they leave us and go to another district. So if they want to be there, I would, like, we, we got to figure out a way how we can make it a successful year with them there. But I'm not against asking, is this your first choice?
Correct.
And if they tell us yes, I want us to accept that they want to be at EJ Brown, and us do our part. Go ahead.
I'm glad you did that, because it leads into something, and I was, I think it's a bigger conversation where we have that understanding that when we have that spring cutoff of, you know, deciding from elementary to middle and from middle school to high school. We see it more at the high school level where, you know, I think you see kid comes in for volleyball at the school down the street from them and finds out that they're really registered to go to Belmont because they hadn't filled out, and they, so I think it might be good to look at those numbers and just look around the district to see, you know, make sure our, our students are one where they would like to be to go to, Dr. Goodwin's point, their families would like to be. But I think there are some cases where we have students that have been placed at schools because they haven't filled out the forms and things like that. And, you know, something comes in the mail, and we know how mail gets. So I think looking in and seeing, you know, where are students at? Are they one where they want to be at? And so I think that is a good exercise for us to do throughout the district, as well as at Edwin Joel Brown, so.
We'll take care of that. That's something that we need to do, because you're right. If I don't fill out the paperwork, I get assigned to the closest school, and I, I may not want to go to that school. I may want to go to a different school, so we can do that.
May I, President?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I would, we have Charity Adams, their numbers are low. Can we do some more, like, call some of the families and find out what their interests are, whether or not they've just been assigned? And if we have three hundred and thirty freshmen, or three hundred and thirty-seven graders and two hundred and nineteen eighth graders, that's five hundred and forty-nine students in a building that was built for elementary kids, and these are junior high kids that are very, very, very active and physical. So please consider that when you're understanding what the best place is, because, you know, that energy, a lot of the containment within the building and just, you know, having the kids have to be so boxed in, in a way, really creates a lot of the dynamic in that building that is not healthy. So I think that's a pretty big number of junior high kids to put in, in elementary building.
Well, another, another option could be, another recommendation could be that we put two of the modulators there and move two classrooms out, but it wouldn't be a whole unit out, if, if that's making sense. We just add two classrooms on and then put two classrooms at an elementary.
And in some of these STEM pathways, or some of these extra classes that we're creating for some of these kids, you know, when you do think about moving the, moving the kids intentionally through the buildings or to these sub-units that the experience along the way is, whether or not it's science that there's something to engage them, because, yeah, I think that, yeah, thank you.
Well, we'll consider that, but right now, it's, it's my recommendation to the board that we go at least one elementary. And then let's look at the numbers and see, as Mr. Smith recommended, if we need to go one elementary, one middle at Edwin Joel because of numbers, or if we need to go two elementaries. Is that acceptable?
Let's go with your recommendation.
Okay.
Because, yeah, we all over the place.
Thank you. And that concludes my review tonight.
All right, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Turn your mic off.
What I have is amendments for budget appropriations. Most of these amendments are to free up the ESRS, to spend the ESRS, ESRS two money and to free from general fund, which is qualified for ESRS, and make sure all the goods and services are in, in time, which is, ESRS is, the deadline is September thirtieth, 2023. So what we did in here is the movements are, we added six point six million to transfers, transferred from that six point six million to permanent improvement, added three point three million to transportation, added six hundred and seventy-six thousand to custodial operations. We added one point two million to IT. We added five hundred, five thousand three hundred and thirty-four to Fund 451, which is a grant. Added one point one million to pass-through tuition. Pass-through tuition is for our excess cost and catastrophic. Those are the changes we made to make sure everything is done within the fiscal year.
Are there any questions? All right, your next recommendation?
This one is for a vote.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Maybe we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Whit Gagné?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, your next recommendation?
My next recommendation is amended certificate for estimated resources. We am ending this certificate is for, for a permanent transfer to, from ESRS.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, maybe we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Whit Gagné?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Your next recommendation?
This is a transfer from general fund to the permanent improvement fund, four million. That is the, for the projects, capital projects.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Board member Dr. Pickett?
Thank you. What is going to be spent, four million dollars for budget for long-term capital projects? Are there specific projects or just projects in general?
They are projects, several projects for those buildings.
Thank you.
Dr. Lawrence, can you come up and speak on each project?
Several of the projects are HVAC projects that, because the rest of the country is also doing HVAC projects with their ESRS monies, we can't get that done by the thirtieth of September, so we can't meet that deadline. We need some extension time there. Other projects are the air conditioning on the bus, that's about two point two five million. The purchase of buses themselves, facade-facing at Ponnetz, other capital infrastructure for buildings that have long-term, long-term capital outlays that we've not taken care of in terms of maintenance and repair. Yeah, those are just some of the projects that come to mind. Oh, Jackson Center, the renovation of Jackson Center to have it prepared for students is currently not prepared for students. There's HVAC issues and issues with the auditorium. And we have, yeah, those are the ones that come to mind. There, there are a few more.
Can we get a list of the projects and the breakdown of their cost?
Oh.
Not, not right now, but...
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, hot water boiler heaters in thirteen buildings, it's a lot.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, maybe we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Whit Gagné?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, your next recommendation?
This one is for a review only, certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2024.
Are there any questions? Your next recommendation?
Okay, this one is the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2024. We are calling it temporary because we don't know the fund balance is going to be. And we are using temporary until September.
Are there any questions? All right, your next recommendation?
Monthly financials for May. Our financials were reviewed last Thursday and reviewed by the finance committee, and this is for the board.
All right, are there any questions? All right, your next recommendation?
Permission, this is permission to advertise for formal solicitation.
Are there any questions? Okay, next recommendation?
Permission to utilize purchasing cooperatives.
Are there any questions? I have one on the cooperative agreements that we utilize. How does this affect our, our doing business with local, local, small, minority, or women-owned businesses in the Dayton area?
We still use locals, but if we need to use these ones, it's already approved and bidet, so we can use them, but still we can use the locals.
I'd like to see this one add some language in there that those still come to us to be able to review, to see what we're doing, because I don't know what we did last year by per, by the cooperative agreement versus opportunities that may have been something that someone in our local community could have done. Can I have that language added into this resolution? That we still, for the next year, we can see all the ones that were utilized on a purchasing cooperative? Are there any other questions? Your next recommendation?
Next one is minutes, minutes for May sixth, May sixth, May ninth, May sixteenth, and May twenty-two.
All right, any questions? Your next recommendation?
Donations. We have one donation. One donation from organizing for American Glorious Days, Inc.
Are there...
Which is a hundred dollars. Thank you, donors.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, your next recommendation?
Purchase requisitions. These are from different departments, and let's look at them, and if you have any question, we'll ask.
Any questions on the purchase requi-- go ahead, Board Member, Vice President Smith?
Thank you, ma'am. With the Chrysler Pacifica van, what are some of the uses that we're thinking of using that for right now?
We wanted to actually have passenger vans, but there are no passenger vans available. Transporting students to and from, we wanted, we wanted one per high school, actually. So these vans, once they're delivered, will go to Thurgood and Dunbar in order to get the students back and forth if a bus is not available, or if a small number of students for the classes we're talking about. But we want to try and have vans for every building so that they can do CCP transportation, they can do small group transportation back and forth to different venues, things like that. So just trying to have our high schools have a little more flexibility with vans.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? Board Member Stacey?
Thank you, Madam President. The Howard Music, when is, when is our summer band camp? I see there, this to purchase instruments for summer camp. Summer is upon us, so when is these, when will these instruments be purchased, and when will camp begin?
The band instruments, as soon as this is approved next week, can be purchased. The summer band camp, there are two different types of band camps. There are the band camps that our high school directors are doing, and then there's one band camp that was supposed to be for fifth graders through eighth graders, and we have those jobs posted right now. So those, those jobs for the directors have not been filled at this point, but it's supposed to be sometime in July. It's kind of like a pre-band program.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
All right, any other questions?
I have some requests to adding some additional things to the purchase requisition form, just to ensure we are following our policies. Items that are over 50,000, can, if, if they were, if they were required a bid, can you just put on here the amount of bids that we had, just the number? If they were made through the cooperative agreement, can a column be on there just to show me how we got there? I need to ensure that we're following our policies.
Okay, so let me just re-say that. You're requesting that anybody who turns in a purchase requisition indicate whether there's a bid process that was followed, or whether it's a cooperative agreement?
Correct.
Or no bid needed?
Correct.
So Sharice and the people that she works with for that and procurement will develop that on the form, will add that to the form.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Stacey?
Thank you, Madam President. Under 15,000, less than 15,000, J.W. Pepper and Son Band Equipment for Thurgood Marshall STEM High School, do we know what equipment that will be, and is it equipment that Howard Music couldn't provide?
I don't know what that equipment is, but I'll have to, I'll have to find out and let you know that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Next recommendation?
This one is for a vote, purchase requisition.
Are there, okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second, any questions? Board Member Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. On this requisition for a vote, it says participants 49999 for the 2023 Chrysler Pacifica, but on the purchase requisition for vote next week, it says King Dodge. Are these, is this another van on top of the King Dodge van?
We actually had, we actually had some vans that were by, with different, different companies, and they sold them out from under us, so we're trying to get the ones that are on the lot right now purchased. So yes, it's two different companies, two different vans. We're trying to make sure we don't lose another van because we didn't get a vote through.
And another question regarding these vans, do we not currently have vans in our fleet that could be used to transport students back and forth from the new initiative, the shared campus initiative?
We, we have some vans, but we use them in different ways. Stivers has their vans that they use, Ponins has their CTE vans that they use. There are some fleet vans that are used, and I'll let Dr. Lawrence talk about that. And besides just going back and forth between the two buildings, we want to try and give some flexibility to CCP classes being off-campus and somebody taking kids to those classes as well. So it's not just about the shared courses, it's about other things as well, but I'll, I'll let him answer the fleet van.
Yeah, Board Member Sampson, most of our fleet vans, we use for county-wide transportation for students that we have to transport outside of the county for special education reasons, foster care reasons, so they're tied up during the day. And so we need those additional vans for field trips and also, so that really each, each high school should have their own van.
Got it.
Last question, if I may, Madam President.
Keep it going.
With the transportation piece, has there been any consideration on students who drive? Will students be able to drive from campus to campus, or will they be expected to be in a district-sponsored vehicle?
We have not talked about that, and for safety purposes, we likely would say we want to make sure that we transport them, but we have not had that conversation, no.
All right, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next recommendation? Nope, she has one more.
Oh, yeah, I have Zen in now. One.
Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, does that conclude your recommendations?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Lawrence, your recommendations?
I'd ask that the board accept the resolutions for EPC, and it is a cooperative for school bus, school bus bids. So David Beer talked earlier about the 16 buses that we have coming, the 15 that we have ordered, but we want to continue to get competitive bids for all buses in the future. And the way we do that is by accepting this resolution so we can pay the least amount possible for the buses, or so we can have as many bids as possible.
All right, are there any questions? All right, seeing none, your next recommendation?
My next recommendation is the workplace, workplace happiness and leadership purchase requisition from Charlton and Charlton. And as I mentioned earlier, we want to measure the level of happiness so that we can assign it to employee retention. So I mentioned surveying all of the operations folks, about 700 of them, a focus group, 15 interviews, and also a final summary report, and meetings with both sets of leadership at transportation operations with a final report, and a matrix that we can use to try to make sure that our behaviors mimic those other spaces and places that create a culture to keep employees here in Dayton Public Schools, specifically, in this case, in operations and transportation. It's something we've been talking about in our customer service committee, something we've been talking about tangentially in a lot of different places about culture in Dayton Public Schools. And so we're trying to align our behaviors and beliefs with our actions.
Okay, I have a question. How is this different than what is on, is it in contracts or?
It's not.
Okay, so then why is it in two locations?
It shouldn't be.
Okay. Okay, so which one needs to be removed? The one, the second one? It should be in contracts?
No, I removed the first one and leave this one underneath my, my recommendations.
Yeah, because then it would go on purchase requisitions. It's somewhere else other than the section you have it in. It's either in purchase requisitions or it's in contracts. Board Member Smith is saying a lot of words to me that he probably could tell you, but I don't know why he's whispering to me, but he is.
Did he say where it was?
I mean, he's sitting right next to me, and the mic is right in front of him.
Leonard, I'm trying to defer.
No, hey, here we go.
No, I'm saying you could, since what you have in your recommendations is kind of just letting us know what it is, you could then put that in, if we went up to contracts and have that link in there, so we could open that up in contracts, as we all have sometimes in executive content, or you could actually put it in the public content there.
Okay.
So then you wouldn't have to have it there. But that would be one way to do it, because if we then removed it from contracts, we still have to, like, that is where we would have to, then we still have to move it over to purchase requisitions as well. Yep. You'd have to have it in both places.
Gotcha. Yeah, we can take care of that on our end.
I'm gonna add one additional correction to this one, since this is a sole source, prior to it, it needs to be approved as a sole source? So you need to have, you need to also add in a recommendation on here for a sole source approval for this contract.
Will do.
All right, are there, does that conclude your recommendations as you're walking off? Okay, all right. Okay, we are in new business. Ms. Kidd? I don't know where she is. I can't see her. Are you behind us?
Yeah, she's like the Wizard of Oz.
Oh, man. Ms. Kidd, are my first readings on here? Okay. Okay, you get those on by the time it come out of exec session? Okay, so I'm going to go on, move on from that, and go into, go to the next item, which is a travel, I believe.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
For clarification, you don't have any second readings?
I feel like they already did these, though. I do have, I have to, I have to look at those again.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Kidd, these second readings, what date are these from? You said May review session, but that's when we started doing the first reading at the first one, that's why I'm asking about it. And then we did the second one at the second meeting. But you know what, they're here, so I'm gonna do a second reading on this one, since it's here. Okay.
So we've never done a second reading on these, right? All right, that's my thought.
Okay. All right. Inso much as the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules, and regulations, Mayo and the committee, which was appointed, has been working towards the goal, the following is brought at this time for a second reading and compliance with the board file. Now therefore being resolved that the Board of Education of the Dayton City Schools District, Montgomery County, Ohio hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the Handbook of Policies, Rules, and Regulations, G-C-B-A, G-C-C, G-C-D. I move that we adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second, are there any questions? Seeing none, maybe we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, the next one is a, a travel, I'm not sure whose travel this is, I did it, if anyone has any information on this travel? Ms. Spencer, right, so I'm gonna save this to next week so she can tell the board a little bit about what this travel is, because I believe this is for State School Board Association, so, so we will move that one till next week. Okay, pursuant to Section 121.22G, the Ohio revised code, I move that this board go into an executive session, the meeting is being held to consider the appointment, employment of an public employee. Is there, yeah, that was my most, is there a second?
So moved.
I always don't know if there's something at the bottom, so. You gotta scroll first. Move to second, all right, are there any questions? Maybe we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Ms. Wiegany?
Yes.
Dr. Pickett?
Yes.
Five yeses.
The Dayton Public School District is a thriving school system, serving students from preschool through high school. With more than 12,000 students across 27 schools, parents can feel confident that their students will receive a high-quality education and graduate prepared for lifelong success. Here are 11 reasons you will love Dayton Public Schools. All DPS preschools are five-star rated by the Ohio Department of Education and are free for students. All first through third grade classrooms implement the district's successful double-teaching model to increase academic achievement and close gaps. All fourth through sixth grade classrooms provide high dosage tutoring for students, which reduces class times and provides students with more individualized instruction. Students of all ages have career exploration opportunities to help them learn about different career paths and develop an understanding of what is required to make their dreams a reality. DPS has one-to-one technology, which means all students have access to a Chromebook. DPS is home to one of the world's 41 Challenger Learning Centers, where students get hands-on experience with science, math, engineering, design, and learn about space travel and exploration. The district offers music and art opportunities at all grade levels. Middle and high school students can even take part in an all-city band to perform with students from across the district. Middle school students can participate in Project Lead the Way classes to explore STEM concepts and learn valuable life skills. These courses are designed to teach students to be problem solvers, critical thinkers, and team players. The district cares about both students and their families. Family resource coordinators are in many schools to help connect families to any resources they may need, and student resiliency coordinators and student behavior therapists are available to any student who may need counseling or support. The district offers two career technology centers to prepare students for college and careers. At Ponins CTC and Metal Dale CTC, students can choose from dozens of pathways and begin working toward industry credentials in their chosen field. All high school students can participate in college credit plus courses, which allows them to earn college credits for free during high school. These credits transfer to public colleges and universities after graduation. Students can even earn an associate degree while in high school. Learn more and enroll today at daytonpublic.com.